Okay, it's 5:00. We're going to bring our November 24, 2025 work session to order. We'll just begin with roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Ogle?
Here.
Otis?
Here.
We have two items on our agenda. You can see them there, and we'll start with item number one, which is discuss Third Street and Bridge Road corridor study. And Travis and Wade are going to tag team on this?
I will be doing most of the talking unless you guys stump me with a question. So yeah, like the mayor mentioned, we're back to present and discuss the Third Street Corridor Study, the Town Square Master Plan, and the West Bridge Road Corridor Study, revisiting a conversation we had back in September. For your guys' reference, we've included slides that were included in the original presentation. We've kind of parsed that portion down to just include the stuff that's being proposed. And then the main point of tonight's discussion will be the West Bridge Road section. So as we go through this, our goal here tonight is we want to provide you with that revised project scope. We want to discuss the correspondence we had with the DOT, and then help council to understand what the project timeline would be moving forward. So we're going to gloss through a lot of this. This is all the slides that we had previously, you know, explaining the history and the role that Third Street plays in your transportation network, including, you know, the regional park, the town square, all those things that kind of feed into it and create this backbone of your transportation network. And really looking at the Third Street Corridor and Town Square Master Plan as that comprehensive plan for Third Street and Town Square. That hasn't changed from the last time we talked in December. It's going to be more, the Third Street and Town Square portion of the study would be focused more on future planning, future redevelopment, long-term, long-scale looking. Because we've got all those open properties, we've got future land uses that right now don't match what is there today. And so what could that corridor look like? What does that corridor need to look like as we move forward? You know, wayfinding, potential funding opportunities, con stepping for streetscapes, gateway features, all those kinds of things are all included in those larger plans. We did also bring those hard copy examples again tonight if you wanted to review those, but we'll buzz through those pretty quick, just kind of give you an idea of what we're going to be outputting here, potential infill development plans, all that kind of stuff. And then updating that access management plan that we review and govern off of when we receive submittals for commercial and development purposes. But the big point of tonight's presentation and discussion is visiting the West Bridge Road Corridor Study. So basically, what this West Bridge Road Corridor Study is going to look like is it's going to look a little more technical. There's definitely going to be some corridor concepting. There's going to be some of the quote-unquote "prettier" things that we talked about with the Third Street Corridor Study, but there's going to be a lot more technical information in the West Bridge Road, A, because it's in that DOT corridor, but B, because we know what a majority of the inputs are on that corridor, we don't have to do as much planning, we don't have to do as much, you know, forecasting. We can look at what's there today. We can look at the plans that we've received and how do those play into the way the corridor is built. So that involves collection of turning movements at nine intersections along West Bridge Road. That includes both street intersections and then commercial access points along that frontage road that we have on the north side of West Bridge Road. We're going to utilize Des Moines area NPO traffic forecasting. They've got some really, really good data on what the metro is going to look like, what they're going to continue to expect for growth, and what we can expect as pass-through traffic and things like that. It really helps us with forecasting. It also helps trim some of the scope and budget out of the project because they're doing a lot of that forecasting work for us. A huge component of this is going to be reviewing and summarizing crash and safety data within the project corridor. That's a huge priority for the DOT, and with it being a shared jurisdiction, that's going to be one of the things that, A, is super important, but B, if we can reduce those crashes, it actually presents this project in a much more positive light when it comes to funding and going after some of those grant applications and those grant programs. And then developing those turning movements at the study intersections, turn lanes, signalization, roundabouts, all those kinds of things would be built into this West Bridge Road study. Really, really technical on this slide, but really, you know, we're looking at turn lanes, we're looking at widenings. Do we need two lanes? Do we need one lane? Do we need a turn lane? All those kinds of things throughout the corridor, and then reviewing and updating that access management plan. The West Bridge Road access management is going to be hugely important, not necessarily because there's going to be a lot of lots that develop new, but as we see redevelopment, as some of those businesses cycle through, some of those lots change uses, change hands, get subdivided, all those kinds of things, access management moving forward will be hugely important so that we can help govern how that corridor continues to grow, continues to operate, and making sure that we're doing things diligently and in a way that is mindful of the future and the future needs of the community. And then the big thing is going to be that study is going to be prepared in accordance with Iowa DOT guidance for traffic studies, including issuance of a full study report. That'll be something that's a little bit different. We'll probably issue one report as a whole, but there'll be a section of it that's a lot more technical and has a lot more data in it than what we would have originally anticipated for this project. But I think it'll give us a good idea of a kind of a future planning document plus one that we're making sure that West Bridge Road functions the way it needs to. Kind of jumping into, so at our September meeting, the council requested that we approach the DOT, asking for both support and participation in this study. In contacting District 1, they're supportive of a study. They acknowledge the need for that study. And in doing so, they have prepared a funding agreement that's been sent to city staff for review. We've briefly reviewed it, but we wanted to get this presentation in front of the council before we went in deep on that funding agreement. But the DOT has proposed a participation of $25,000 towards the project cost. And what does that mean for you guys? So as presented on September 8, the Third Street Corridor and Town Square Master Plan was a proposed fee of $85,000. With the addition of West Bridge Road included, we're estimating a fee of $109,900. That is an increase of $24,900. So basically, the way that we're viewing this is by getting the DOT to participate, city council by adding West Bridge Road is going to essentially perform that study for free. As you, as we move forward, we'll have an engineering agreement for your review at a subsequent meeting. Some of the numbers don't necessarily flesh that out in terms of our current scope of services shows the West Bridge Road study at approximately $42,000. But the way that we're doing that and why it doesn't quite look that way, but it's really the case, is that by adding the West Bridge Road Corridor Study, we're taking advantage of some optimization and some efficiencies in the Third and Bridge intersection, where we've lumped a lot of the fee into that West Bridge Road study number, but then reduced the Third Street Corridor Study by the same. So ultimately, through this exercise, the city will be getting West Bridge Road as a corridor study for essentially $100 less than what we had talked about in September. I guess before we review moving forward, is there any questions, comments, concerns about what we've talked about so far?
I have something to add.
Okay.
Sorry. Wade Griman with Snyder &amp; Associates. There's one thing I wanted to add on the West Bridge Road. If you can picture in your mind's eye coming out of Fairways driveway, looking to the west, there's a crest of a hill. So we're going to be looking at the vertical geometry as well, as if there's anything that's restricting site distance within the corridor that helps to improve that access management plan. I just wanted to point that out, too.
So just one question. The proposed DOT participation of $25,000, is that what they said they thought it was worth to them to pay, or was that amount that we submitted to them?
So that is what was offered by them. Basically, well, we had had a conversation with the DOT probably six months ago at this point, that this was something that could be coming. And so they had basically been using a ballpark number of $100,000, and they felt that 25% participation was fair and reasonable. I think that's where that came from. I don't have any concrete information as to how they established that number, but that would be what is shown in the funding agreement now, is a study fee of $100,000 and their participation at 25.
They were ballparking $100,000 just for the Bridge Road Corridor Study?
No, because when we, when our conversation started, we had a long conversation about a lot of different studies, but we had always talked about the, they had asked if we would, how we would perform, and we said it would likely be a combination. Or that basically, they knew that the Bridge Road portion wasn't going to be $100,000, but they felt that between that and then their leg of Third Street south of Bridge Road, they felt that they, their participation of 25% of $100,000 would be fair and reasonable.
Thanks.
Okay.
Questions?
Yeah.
Are you done presenting?
Well, I think I want to know how you guys feel before we go into the schedule, so.
Okay. Oh, wow. Let's talk about the schedule.
Okay.
I have some questions.
Okay. So moving forward, the project timeline kind of lays out like this. We could have an engineering services agreement as early as the next council meeting, December 8. As part of that, we would assist staff in reviewing and approving the Iowa DOT funding agreement with the idea being that we would want to probably run those agreements concurrently, make sure everybody's on the same page, all the Ts are crossed, all the Is are dotted, and we have no questions about where that funding's coming from. We would then plan to complete the study over calendar year 2026, with those study costs being split between fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. With the idea being is that in that, in your capital improvements plan, you had originally had the Third Street Corridor Study in fiscal year '26, and then the Town Square Master Plan in fiscal year '27. So as part of that, we would scale both numbers a little bit, but we would kind of stay with the intent of what the CIP was, splitting that fee over those two fiscal years. And then presentation of the study results to city council, we would plan to do in either late 2026 or early 2027, just knowing how hectic and chaotic things get around the holidays and where those meeting dates lie. We don't necessarily want to commit to late 2026, but we would have something at minimum before the snow thaws in spring of '27, so. With that in mind, now you got questions.
So help me understand, because I'm not educated on this matter. Why does it take so long? Why would we, if we said yes, we want to proceed now, why would we not get the results till?
So part of it is because of how peaky Polk City's traffic is. You guys see extreme peaks when it comes to school and lake traffic specifically, so we would want to make sure that we understand how those two conditions impact these two corridors. What I will tell you is, so the example I'll give you is, we did two traffic impact studies on North Side Drive. The first one was counted during February or March of a school year. When we then did one in June of the following year, the traffic dropped 23%. So that's what we're seeing, and we see pretty much the same performance on lake and recreational traffic, on bridge, and then south of bridge, on Third Street. You get really, really strong peaks in those seasons, and so what we want to make sure is, is that we're capturing the full picture of how those corridors perform.
Nor you, is your strategy then to capture a full 12 months?
It would be strategically counting at different periods of time. So it would probably be during, some of the intersections during the school year, some of them during the recreational season, just to kind of see how it works.
So why could we not expect the report before the end of the year, next year?
I would intend to submit one by the end of the year. I just don't want to, with the way that the holiday season gets, I just didn't want to commit to it. What I will tell you is that a big component of these plans is we are going, as part of our scope and fee, we're proposing creation of a project website, where we have a public input component that involves marking, problem areas, highlights, lowlights, all those kinds of things within the corridor, and we want to make sure that the public has enough time to engage with those things. So that's another component of it as well, is it's not only the traffic piece, that's specifically on Bridge Road, and then as you get further north on Third Street, but then the public engagement portion, we want to make sure that we have enough time to, A, get the website set up, B, get it distributed, and C, get responses to it, particularly before we get into a public information meeting setting, because we want to make sure that as we present concepts, they actually reflect what the public, A, is engaging with, and B, feels is necessary or needed, and cover some of the more specific elements. So an example would be, as we've gone through the Trailhead stuff, as far as the site identity structures, working through like the Arts and Culture Commission to understand what they felt the character of the square was, and what that site identity structure should look like. Things like that are really, really important when it comes to corridor concepting, because we're going to have those gateway elements, we're going to have those streetscape elements, and we want to make sure that our plan is suited to what people want in Polk City, and not necessarily, this is an extreme example, but like, say, Polk City by and large hates oak trees. Well, we don't want to put a bunch of street trees in that are all oak trees if everybody's going to be really upset about them. That's a surface level, pretty extreme example, but that's the kind of thing that we're looking for, is we want to make sure that the concepts we're putting together match the character and the intent of the community as a whole.
Can I add a little bit to that?
A lot of times when we do corridor studies like this, we're also looking for future funding sources. And so when you think about the NPO, you think about the DOT. The DOT is essentially entertaining projects like this to work into their STIP about at the end of the calendar year every year. So we want to have a deliverable and draft form to coordinate with them so that they can make their decisions in-house on whether or not they're going to fund portions of the construction and maybe subsequent, like environmental studies going forward. So that's also, we generally like to do studies with a culmination about at the end of the calendar year like this, so, for that reason.
Anyone else? So I did have another question, and this is sort of a out-on-the-lim kind of question. If we did a corridor study and it looked like we needed a turning lane on South Third Street, would we, would the city have the property to widen the street enough to put that turn lane in, or would we be able to put a turn lane in with what we have?
You're talking about Third Street?
Third Street.
South here.
Yeah, south there.
I don't have a firm answer to that.
Okay.
What I would tell you is that as part of this study, we would understand what those needs are, and as part of the study, you would understand how much time and effort it's going to take to be able to do that, in terms of, do you have enough right-of-way, or should you plan on approaching folks about right-of-way? Or are there things that we can do in the corridor that can make it so that we can do right-of-way? Things like, and again, I don't, I'm not committing to anything, but one example would be is, is there a way that we can offset the roadway within the right-of-way, eliminate sidewalk on one side, and then add that additional pavement and make everything work? Those would be the kinds of things that a study would do, is you'd have a really firm understanding on what kind of right-of-way needs you have in that corridor, and it would allow you to plan for the future in terms of, one of the things I'm thinking about is that property at Third and Davis, you know, should the city retain that for any reason, or should you retain a portion of it, or, you know, or should you seek specific proposals for a very specific use because of this, that, and the other that we find in this study? You know, we only want so many trips generated, and so we're going to target very specific users on that property. Those are the kinds of things that these studies come away with, is helping you to understand not only what the future corridor should look like, but what are some of the obstacles and hurdles to that.
Okay. You're going to be presenting something at the December 8 meeting?
If that's council's direction.
Is that council's direction? Nick?
Yeah, I think we're ready to move forward with this.
Mandy?
Sure.
Jeff? Rob?
Nope. I appreciate the work on the how. I'm still not seeing anything that gets me to a good why. So I, my fear is, and the timing I get, because I know from warrants for everything, from the turning lanes to stoplights, you know, when they take it at 3:00 AM on a Tuesday, it doesn't meet it, and then they take it at noon on a Saturday, it does. And so that's a little bit extreme, but I get your point there on the seasonality from what we're dealing with, but we're going to have a development proposal within the next year or two, whatever, that's going to turn this on its ear. Because we're, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is going to be based on the current structure as it exists, so vacant lots in different spots, and what it's not going to do is help us accommodate an unknown.
So the Third Street Corridor Study will include some concepting for infill development. So it would be things like best guesses or reasonable uses based on the site challenges. So things like 900 South Third Street, where they've got that drainage channel that runs through the middle, we would take, we would take a reasonable shot at what we can expect for traffic loading there, and include that as part of the concepting for the study.
As well as regional growth.
Yeah, as well as regional growth.
What do you mean by that?
So as the, we typically project traffic for growth over a period of time, say 30 years. Knowing the growth pattern that you have experienced, pretty rapid, we're going to protract that out for 30 years and anticipate essentially what that traffic volume is going to look like, and then lay out concepts that take into account for that growth from a regional perspective. Because you have a throughput, you're a corridor that has more than just this as a destination or an origin, so that puts a little more pressure on it, and that's part of the reason why this is being proposed.
Well, I mean, I think there will be good information here. $85,000 is a lot of money, and to me, could, and we're not in an either-or scenario, but helping alleviate development costs to specifically get something more seems a better use than essentially a thought exercise on the best way to accommodate a few unknowns, so, I mean.
Is that a yay, then?
No, it's not a yay.
It's not a yay. Okay, well, we have four yays, so we'll move forward with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is our sidewalk repair program, and Chelsea and Mike are going to tag team on that.
Mike can stay sitting over there. If I have a question to ask him, I'll just look at him.
Okay. Thank you, Wade.
Thank you. You guys can't see that, can you? We'll give it a second, and see if it'll reconnect. Travis, I'm blaming you. I don't know what you did to the screen. Are you all okay with me walking you through the presentation that's in Dropbox? Can we do that? I'll kind of just talk you through the slides?
Which one are you wanting to go through?
We're on the sidewalk repair program presentation.
Repair? Yep.
Yep.
I don't know.
I think we're good, Chelsea.
Okay, you got it?
I think we all have it.
You all have it on your screens? Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know why it's not working up here. Okay, let's get started. Sorry about that. So just to refresh and kind of talk about what we've previously discussed about the sidewalk repair program, the city councils previously discussed this topic at two previous work sessions throughout this calendar year. I'm going to go over some basic information on the topic and then discuss the next steps. So the intention and the purpose of today's work session is I'd like to evaluate the council's interest in either adopting the sidewalk repair program or not adopting it. If there's support to adopt the program, I would add this to the December 8 council agenda. Can you guys all still see the slides? Are we on two?
We can't see these slides. We have them on our individual devices.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Okay, so let's go to slide three, then. Let's just talk about what we've discussed the past two years with the change in sidewalk liability to the local governments. So back in 2014, there was case law that stated that the city had the ability to shift liability of maintenance of sidewalks, or just liability of sidewalks, to the abutting property owner. And that was determined by case law known as Madison versus the City of Iowa City. So if you fast-forward back to 2023, there was a new sidewalk liability case called Bankers Trust versus the City of Des Moines, and this particular case shifted the liability back to the city government. So it was a change from the 2014 decision that was made at the Supreme Court, and back in 2024, we all discussed this, and the City of Polk City adopted a change in the ordinance to sidewalk liability. Do you all remember this process that we've been through?
I do, and one thing I can't remember if we talked about or came up after is, so the 2023 case is a commercial entity?
Correct.
And we have verified, League of Cities, somebody, or maybe it's directly in the precedent, that this is all sidewalks, residential, commercial, everything? Okay.
Yep. It is all sidewalks, and when we talk about doing this repair program, we need to talk about that because we'd treat all sidewalk owners the same. Okay, I'm going to flip to slide four. So basically, what this change in liability means is that if there's an incident, the city government is liable. However, the city can be proactive in requiring abutting property owners to repair fixed sidewalk issues. That information is listed under Iowa Code Section 364.12. Next slide. So that's just some basic information. After the first time the council discussed this matter, the council directed city staff to go take an inventory of all the repairs that needed to be made throughout the city. The city staff's goal with, after we took that inventory and we came back with a proposed program, is that we create a safe, walkable community through regular inspections and structured repair efforts. So those were the intentions that we set up for ourselves when we put together that So I want to spend just a little time talking about the inventory that the city staff took back in the summer of 2025, so you understand how many residents this is going to impact if we choose to implement a program. Okay, so slide seven. This is a breakdown of the inventory of repairs that we came across. So the Public Works Department walked all of the sidewalk within the city limits of Polk City back in the summer of 2025. Of that information, there were 304 sidewalk repairs that needed to be addressed throughout the community of Polk City. And then we took that 304 figure, and we broke it down into six different categories of what the location repair was. You have that information as an exhibit to your proposed policy. There are some pictures in that policy also, so you can take a look at the six different issues that we've seen with sidewalks across the city. But these are pretty common codes that other cities have identified sidewalk repairs to, that have been identified with their repair programs. In addition to the 304 sidewalk repairs, the city staff identified 29 curb stops which needed to be repaired, and those letters have already been sent out to property owners since those were all considered tripping hazards. I don't have figures for you today on how many of those have been repaired and how many of those have not been, but we can- not been, but we, we consider those the most serious issues, so we went ahead and sent letters to those twenty-nine homeowners. I'm going to go to slide nine. Now I want to kind of shift and talk a little bit about the proposed program and the proposed policy that you have in front of you today that's been put together by the city staff and would be city staff recommendation for implementation. So based off of the previous two work sessions and the conversations we've had with the city council, city staff has prepared a program for you all that would need to be considered at a formal city council meeting. And the program focuses on repairs that need to be made to reduce the liability to the city. Our program would ensure that we're trying to educate the public on this matter as well and why we are doing this. We have reviewed all deferred sidewalks and we've identified a few gaps in the existing developments and developed areas that we would like to address as well. With the program, we're looking to provide easy solutions for residents and adequate time for repairs. I'm going to talk a little bit about that today because I'd like some feedback from you all on some of the things we're proposing. Something too that I think with, if, if we're to implement this program, I think it's very important that we manage our expectations. I do not anticipate that if we were to send three hundred plus letters out that we're going to get a hundred percent compliance. And I think we need to be okay with that in the first year because we're really going to be trying to educate the public the first year. So I think it's really important that we manage our expectations and have some idea of what we consider success with this program. And I think we need to probably provide a little bit of flexibility in year one as well. Okay, slide eleven. So basically, how the program would work is each year the city staff would do annual inspections and we would send letters out before April first annually. So the initial inspections were completed back in the summer. We would take that list and that would be the twenty twenty-six letters that we would send out. And then we would do inspections every year thereafter as part of the program. Our proposed deadline for getting people to repair their sidewalks would be August fifteenth. I think there's some discrepancy here that we could change that to. Our goal would be that dangerous conditions, we'd like to give people a shorter repair window. We propose ninety to a hundred and twenty days after they receive that notice. If it's less dangerous, we could give people a hundred and eighty days to make their repair. One of the challenges that we discussed as a group was we, we want to make this as easy for the homeowner as possible. So our proposal would be that we do an RFP to a contractor to take advantage of economy of scale pricing for a large amount of repairs that could be done. This would also reduce, you know, kind of the stress of anytime you have an issue, you call a contractor up and it's difficult to get them to come out and take a look at it. It's the coordination component dealing with a contractor. So we propose we do an RFP. People could opt in to the city contract if they would choose to do so, or they can make the repair on their own, or they can go out and have their own contractor too. That would certainly be an opportunity. The way the policy is, or the way the program is worded, any unfinished work, it could be completed by the city and special assessed back to the property owner. Some of the key policies and standards, like I mentioned, well, I'll go, I'll go back to this in a second. So for all the sidewalk repairs that need to be addressed, contractor or the abutting property owner has to meet SUDAS and PROWAG standards. And the owners are responsible for all the sidewalk and the, the gap connections that we've identified. Our proposed language, there is a sidewalk permit required for any work you're doing outside of a normal single-family residence permit. That permit is required for, through the Community Development or Building Department. It's a seventy-five dollar permit fee. What we proposed with the program is that the city would be willing to waive that fee if you opt into the city contract. If you choose not to opt into the city contract, we would still have to go out and do that inspection work and we would propose we charge the fee to the abutting property owner. I'm on slide thirteen, so some of the permit requirements. There's an application available online through CitizenServe. Construction cannot begin until a permit is issued or the city goes through the RFP process. We'd still probably require some sort of permit, but we would waive the fee. And then you would call City Hall, you'd call Building Department to schedule an inspection before construction and after construction. I'm on slide fourteen. When our group was meeting, putting together the program, we identified a few different financial assistance programs that might be available to those that qualify. There are tax credits available through Polk County for sidewalk repairs for seniors and disabled property owners. Also, just a reminder, the city does have a low to moderate income fund, an LMI fund, and we have money available if that is another program that the city council would be interested in adopting as well, that people could take advantage of if they need to make a repair. So what I'm looking for today, I'm looking for some direction from the city council to give me some sort of indication. Are we ready to proceed with the sidewalk repair program? I would propose we put this on the December eighth agenda. With notifications needing, needing to be sent out to the abutting property owners before April first of every year, I, I do believe the clock is ticking on this matter if we're going to implement a program. If there's not interest from the city council to implement a program, there's no, there's no need to get this moving. And then also, just a reminder, if we, if we don't do a, a program and if we aren't proactive about trying to repair some of the sidewalks across the city, the city will assume full liability on the sidewalk matter. So I'd be happy to take any questions you have for me and any feedback you want to give, but I'm looking for direction on next steps.
Chelsea, in the included proposed program, the repair codes, is there grading with that or is one just as dangerous as the other one? So it goes A through F? And I guess I was trying to understand if there is like a sliding grade because we talk about how is the determination made if one's less dangerous or more dangerous?
I think that's a good question. I don't know that just because it's graded A through F, it, that some of those categories are more dangerous than others. It's really specific to the incident. So the curb stop issue that I will give you, we had, we had some residents that had a curb stop six to eight inches above the sidewalk. It was a very obvious tripping issue. We would call those dangerous. But I think there's some discretion there on what we would term dangerous versus less dangerous and we would give people a timeline based off of that. I think too, if you've got some ideas for, you know, flexibility or a timeline, we can, we can certainly change that as well.
I guess my only concern with that, that leads room to interpretation or ambiguity on, on, you know, what's dangerous and what's not.
Sure.
So of the three hundred and four locations, is that specific dwellings that have, so it's three hundred and four different residents or whoever that have sidewalk issues?
It is. And if you go back to slide seven of the presentation, it's three hundred and four individual property owners. But if you look at code A, we're talking about five hundred and twenty-eight panels. So a property owner could have one issue, but they could have multiple panels that need to be repaired.
So right now, moving off on, on that code, I'd code talk, we've identified things that meet different codes as far as what's wrong with the locations. Have we done anything to identify which ones are the worst and need to be addressed quickest and graded those down in any, any way, shape or form?
Mike, I told you I was going to call on you. Do you want to answer or Cody can come answer too? Cody, did you help with inventory?
I did not, but I was the one that kind of talked to other municipalities as far as the grading scale and kind of figuring out the, what the metrics look like for that. And from what I understand from others, it's kind of a pass fail. If it's on the list, it fails. So I don't think there is a severity detail to it. It, it's just, it needs repaired and if it's on the list.
So going into this first year, this is a lot to be asking people to do.
Right.
Even if we don't expect one hundred percent compliance. The first time we talked about this, this was something I hadn't envisioned us doing over the course of two, three, four years with us really targeting those worst, most dangerous ones first and then slowly building it up year over year until we get to a sort of rolling compliance that we can keep, keep targeting these worst ones year over year. I don't know how that works if we're really targeting PROWAG requirements, stipulations, but again, this is a lot to, to do in a year.
Sure.
I will say, just if it helps for information purposes, that even since we started marking panels, there's been several that have made the corrections already without being formally notified. They, they identified the problem and were willing to take care of it. So I'd say it's probably less than ten percent, but a good portion have fixed some already. So if that helps or hurts the decision.
Nice to know that there are proactive citizens out there that are willing to take care of that.
And I would say a good portion that have already completed the repairs were some of the more severe deflection, just pretty bad scenarios, so.
I think we're willing to, to brainstorm and talk about how we could do a phased approach and how we could send out, if you wanted to do this over a three-year period, you know, could we somehow come up with the biggest issues first to address in year one, year two, three, four, et cetera?
I think that's going to be a lot more palatable solution.
Okay.
Going forward on this, but I don't know how everybody else feels.
So that would be the good thing about an education campaign is these are all the sidewalks that need to be corrected, but we're going to start with the worst first. And this is just notice to you that yours is on the list, maybe not the first year, but year two or three or something.
And still provide them the opportunity to jump in.
Right.
With our contractor if they want to fix it.
Do you want me to come back with something that spreads it out over how many years? Would you propose?
Minimum two years.
Council? I have two years. Two years, three years?
Do we know, so I'm not, I'm shifting, but your question, but it plays into potentially my answer. What, I forgot the acronyms, SUDAS or, or PROWAG, do they, where we have gaps? How is that viewed? So I understand what a deficient sidewalk is. If I don't have a sidewalk, is the city more or less liable if I'm walking through somebody's yard and trip over whatever because there isn't a sidewalk?
I don't know, I don't know that I can answer that.
PROWAG only governs constructed facilities except access to public facilities. As long as there is an accessible route to your public facilities, gaps are not necessarily governed by PROWAG.
Okay, so it's probably more focused on the, the case, twenty twenty-three case that shifted liability to municipalities in, in general, right? I mean, if, I understand the regulatory appropriateness or whatever of those two, but again, if we're, if somebody's walking along, there's not a sidewalk there, are they going to treat the fact that there isn't a sidewalk there the same as, as any, you know, deficient sidewalk? I suspect that that would be the case, right? If you're liable for a, a tripping hazard on a sidewalk, you're also liable on, you know, getting between two sidewalks on a rock or whatever, right? That's, so, and, and we've done an inventory of our gaps.
And I will tell you, the, there's not a, I mean, there are a lot of areas of town where there's not sidewalk. When we talk about gaps, it's just a few select areas where we'd like to see gaps filled in. This program is really focused on getting people to repair their abutting sidewalk. So it's, it's focused on where there's existing sidewalk.
Yeah, but I do think this is a good opportunity. If we're having a contractor come in, bidding it, getting a good deal, you know, to offer that of, if you've got a gap in your sidewalk, you're probably going to have to address it at some point. We may or may not have a deadline set for that, but you should jump on board, take, take advantage of this mass pricing that we wouldn't be able to get, I would imagine. Roughly ballpark of what does it cost to replace two panels? Like, are we talking?
If you were to do it as part of the city's project, I would guess it would be between fifty-five and seventy dollars a square yard. So that would be two panels. Two panels would be about three square. You're talking.
A hundred dollars.
If you were to sell, you're talking probably five hundred to a thousand bucks for two panels. If you did it at a common scale and you could have a contractor do a whole bunch of them, you're probably talking more in the two to four.
That was the biggest part of the difficulty in talking to contractors and other municipalities. There's just not a lot of interest for a concrete company to mobilize to come and repair one panel.
Yeah.
So you're probably talking well over a thousand dollars just to get them to show up. To do one panel. So that was where the, the bulk.
Yeah.
Idea is definitely appealing to contractors and homeowners just to, to help cut the costs and spread those out, so.
Are we going to allow homeowners to repair on their own without a contractor?
We would. They, they would have to meet the right criteria and materials, all that. So they would be subject to ripping it back out if it's not correct, so.
I mean, because there's some of those, you might be able to patch a hole, you might be able to shave down and still meet the.
Yeah.
Without replacing concrete.
If, if you just have a gap, you can fill that in with whatever.
Or hole.
If I remember right, a good portion of the deficiencies were able to be ground down. So I think you can alleviate a lot of those with pretty simple calls to contractors or rent a grinder, whatever it is, but.
I'm private minority, but I would like to see these all go out at once instead of phasing them. I think if you throw a couple hundred letters out year one, a couple hundred letters out year two, I think you have ambiguity in that too, because one neighbor's going to get a letter one year and the next door neighbor's going to get one the other year and they're going to go, what, what's going on? I think if you can get it all done at once, you might get some neighbors that talk to each other, which might help with your contractor to have more projects done in one, one go than to spread it out over time.
Yeah. And if the driver is the liability.
Yeah.
The number is irrelevant because they're all liable.
I, I, yeah, I mean, I'd go so far to say is if, if we didn't have these lawsuits in place, I still think this is a good program to implement, implement to, to make sure our residents are safe when they're walking. I mean, regardless of, of what the statute looks like or who is liable, I think safety is paramount here where, you know, Steve's walking in front of me and it's, it's in front of my house and it's your fault, it's still my fault. I mean, I, I think that's, I think it's important to be mindful of our neighbors.
I would tell you that coming from a guy who's done a lot of walking as of late, I am so happy that the sidewalks in my neighborhood are level.
I would say too, comparing ourselves to different municipalities that I talked to in kind of getting this grading scale in place, a lot of them implemented this and have big enough populations where they do these programs in zones around the cities per year. Like, our population is about the size of some of their zones, so I think they're equal, you know, to us sending them out citywide compared to certain zones. So, I think they're equal, you know, to us sending them out citywide compared to certain zones in other cities, so.
Because I think sending a mass letter out at once to identify the issue, introduce residents to the problem and then, you know, following up, if the council decides at some point in time to, you know, break it and north half, south half, that's one thing. But, you know, just making sure that there's a good educational component. You know, here's what's wrong, here's your options for the city to fix it, here's what you can do with a contractor, here's how you can do it on your own. And then, being very transparent in that educational process is going to pay dividends down the road. I think to Jeff's point, and to, you said it too, either it's right or it's wrong. I think if we just kind of lump it in, lump it in as you're deficient or you're not.
Okay, so we're past our hard stop.
Okay.
And I think we've got one year proposed, we've got two years proposed, which?
I would be one year.
There we go. There's a one year. Jeff, Jeff, one year. Rob?
One.
One. Mandy?
One. And I do think part of the education again, like, that's great to know that LMI, there's opportunities there because I think of, you know, the impact of the people. So, yeah, I think one year.
Nick?
We've got enough votes for one year.
I mean, they're high. We are liable whether or not we do this over one year or several years. So, this is a fine solution with me.
Okay, so there's your direction.
Okay, so I'm going to have this on the December 8th agenda. I would say if there's interest for an LMI component, I'd like to add that at the same time as well to get that information out.
If we use LMI, kind of like the water tower, is there ways to kind of thread the needle so it might make the program a little more palatable to all? If we're, you know, a sidewalk that I own isn't just used by me, kind of like a street is used by many. So, can LMI be used universally? If it's in the city-led program or contract?
The way the water tower worked is it only benefited those that qualified. It didn't reduce the cost of the project. It was a credit given to the people that qualified. It'd be very easy for me to do something like that here and duplicate it. So, I'd anticipate bringing that at the next meeting as well if you're good with that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. So, we'll move on to item number three, which is adjournment. Motion in a second, please.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We'll adjourn until 6 o'clock.